I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. I'd like to thank everyone coming out this evening and I'll ask the clerk to please call the room.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphreys.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Browning Page.
Present.
Sunny Nguyen.
Present.
Casey Yeager.
Present.
Thank you. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I'll take a motion for the approval of the regular agenda.
So moved.
The motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those disapproving, approving here and now, so ordered. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good evening, Board. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's great to see so many people here on a beautiful summer afternoon. So turn to your neighbor and tell them you're glad they're here. Board, I just have a few quick highlights for you. Lots of information in my update for you, but I'll just hit a few highlights. I had the privilege last Thursday of attending Leadership 2000's graduation ceremony for the Class 32. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Leadership 2000, it is an organization that has focused now for 32 years on developing leaders throughout all kinds of organizations and businesses in Kansas City, Kansas. So at the 32nd graduation of Leadership 2000, they presented a check for $12,000 to our McKinney-Vento program for our homeless kids. So Jessica Smith, our liaison for our McKinney-Vento program, had the honor of accepting that check on the behalf of the Board, and she shared with the group that this will allow her now not to have to focus so much on fundraising, but to focus on making sure that families and kids are served. And I also want to mention again that because of the efforts of our staff and Avenue of Life, we have been able to cut the homeless rate for our young people by 50% over the last two years. Last week, I also had the privilege of meeting with some Board members from the Safe K Organization. This was the organization that originally provided our athletic trainers for all of our high schools. They have now disbanded, but they wanted to make sure that their remaining proceeds went to a good cause, so they presented the Kansas City, Kansas School Foundation for Excellence a check for almost $3,000, $2,761 to be designated for a scholarship for one of our graduates next May who is interested in sports medicine. So we're very grateful. Board, in the update, you will find the vacancy report. You will also find responses to some human resource questions that were forwarded to me by Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Yeager, you will also find, and the rest of the Board, a copy of the investigation methodology used by Integrity Consulting Solutions on that discrimination investigation that was completed for us, so her methodology is there. So let me end to my comments by thanking this Board, my students, and this community. It has been a privilege to serve as Superintendent. I've learned a lot, met a lot of wonderful people, and have been inspired by the stories of the staff, the grownups, and most especially our young people. So thank you for the opportunity to have served. I have spent 30 years here in this community, 36 overall, and look forward to watching us continue to flourish moving forward. So let me just end my comments with some inspirational words that have been circling in my head. They'll be familiar to you. Let us not grow weary of doing good. For in due season, we will reap if we do not give up. Go forward, don't give up. Our kids are counting on you. Thank you to you all. Thank you. Thank you, Board. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now I ask the Board to please come forward, and Dr. Lane, please step around.
Dr. Lane, on behalf of the Board, we'd like to present you as talking about appreciation for you. Thank you very much. Beautiful. That's beautiful. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Gorgeous. Thank you. Thank you. May I just leave that there so we can enjoy it tonight? Thank you all.
Thank you, David.
to have on the communications?
Last Tuesday, I received an email from someone by the name of Trol Kimble, who was a member of the Concerned Citizens for an Effective School Board. We receive emails from time to time, from constituents and from those who might agree or disagree with us. But this one bothered me because I think it went further than what it should have. I don't mind people expressing their opinion. That's the First Amendment right, and it should, they should be able to say what they need to say. But when you issue a threat, and a threat based not on facts, because all they had to do was call central office and find the information out, this person said that I was receiving a salary and benefits from the district at the same time I was serving on the school board, which is not true. I worked for 30 years for this district, and I got my early retirement, and I'm getting my caper's retirement. So I don't know who this individual is, and I'm quite sure here he may be out in the audience. I don't know. But I think we begin to go on a slippery slope when we start attacking people. We can disagree, because that's just the nature of our society, what we're involved in. But at least let's respect each other to disagree and not go to the extreme. I did go to the sheriff's office to file a complaint, because I don't know, we live in a society now where people will do anything. They have an opinion, and they will go to the extreme. So I have every right to protect myself, and I would hate for somebody up here to get injured because someone has gone to the extreme. So again, you have your First Amendment rights, just as I have mine, and we're going to agree, and we're going to disagree. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not writing anybody, threatening them. So I think we need to be careful how we do this. There's a lot of tension, there's a lot of stuff going on today, and I understand that, and everybody should be concerned, and everybody should be able to express themselves. But it doesn't mean that we go to the extreme. That's all I want to say. And what was printed out, what was sent out, was untrue. And I wish we were in a society where we read more, we really try to dig through and see if this is a fact or if it's an opinion, which is something I always tried to teach my kids. You've got to be able to distinguish between the two. But a lot of people put it out, and a lot of people take it as gospel. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board members have anything, communications? Well, thank you. At this time, we're ready for community comments, and before I ask people to come up, I'd like to read this. At the beginning of their remarks, each speaker must state their name. The speaker's address and phone number shall be recorded on the roll to maintain by the Board Clerk. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, which may include questions by the Board. Speakers will be timed and advised when their time has expired. Extensions may be granted upon the majority vote of the Board. Speakers may only address the Board about policy-related issues and general community concerns. At this time, under community comments, our first person we ask to come up will be Felton Denham and India McClure, District Support.
Mr. Smith, would you mind getting India a step stool?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Felton Denham. My address is 1720 North 73rd Terrace, Apartment 2, and my zip code is 66102. I am Felton Felix Denham Jr., and I have with me this evening my granddaughter, and we are here to support the Superintendent by giving her a gift that we were unable to make happen when all of the other things was happening on the unannounced retirement reception for you, Dr. Lane. But this evening, we would like to present you with two things, a card and some positive comments to let you know how we appreciate you. First, India, would you like to introduce yourself and tell the individuals who you are?
I am India Krishel McClure. I am nine-year-old. I am nine-years-old, and I attended Cloud High Elementary School. My principal is Ms. Jackson, and I would like to thank you, Dr. Lane, and all Board members for assigning great teachers to Cloud High Elementary. They are very strict, but I do learn a lot. My next point, I am so excited about living in the new
Glorious Willis.
Glorious Willis Middle School attendance area. Thank you all for making these things happen. Now, Dr. Lane, my grandpa told
Annie.
Annie that are
That you are retired.
That you are retired. May I give you a card and shake your hand for the things you have done for kids like me and others in the school district.
Okay. It's pretty obvious that she was nervous, and she's, when she gets nervous, she says, "I'm scared." And I says, "Well, I'm right here with you. I'm scared too." But this evening, Board, to President Brenda Jones, Dr. Lane, and other Board members, good evening. I have several things to say. Please allow me to finish, and then it will make sense. My presentation, I have about six talking points to presenting Dr. Lane with my gift. And then the second thing, I would like to describe for you how I met Dr. Lane.
Excuse me, three minutes are up.
Okay. My three minutes up?
Do I get three minutes apiece? Oh, I'm sorry. You get, you have permission to have your three minutes. She had hers.
Eight days of my life, my wife badgered me and pestered me before I agreed to meet you. And the day before, I decided that I would meet you, Dr. Lane. My wife said, "Be ready." She drove into the parking lot, blocked me in so I couldn't go to work, and said, "Come on." And we did. We met Dr. Lane, and I want to tell you, Dr. Lane, all of my life, all of my life since I was nine-years-old, I have been tutored, mentored to by a superintendent of schools since I was nine-years-old. I started cutting county superintendent's yard in my county, and he asked my mom to let me ride with him every Saturday until I reached 10th grade, and she agreed to do that, and I said, "Oh, my." But let's go forward with the next thing. After meeting you, we had already made up our minds that I would answer her whether you were the person that she had been describing in Pigland. That's Mississippi talk. So soon as I met you, shook your hand, I looked over to my wife and said, "She all And you looked at me and shook my hand and looked at me like I was crazy. But what I was saying that you were all right. That's Pigland. But let me tell you what happened. I did not know who hired you, and Dr. Deloris Pinkett hired you. I found that out about two weeks ago. What a good hire. Dr. Pinkett also had a daughter that attended Sumner. Dr. Lane, you have been a five-star performer in your tenure as Superintendent of Schools in USD 500 Kansas City, Kansas. You have hired five-star associates, highly-qualified associates, who specialize in areas that you knew could communicate their skills to staff, and you did that. Congratulations for that. Now, if you want to know what a five-star athlete is, you would talk to my good friend, Walt Thompson, at the end of this, and he can describe what it means that you're good in all areas, but you have sense enough to know that you need specialists to do the job. And then, I had a preacher, a minister, and I'll be through. He made, he preached a sermon saying, "Doing too much." And it stuck with me for a while. I didn't quite follow through on it until he mentioned his mother's name, who was sitting next to me. And then I started listening very carefully. It made a little sense. And out of all the things that we're doing with a new boy, new superintendent and everything, I just hope that I will come off the sideline, which I am. I want to work with you. I'm not going to watch the board meetings on TV. I'm going to come back, and I, as long as my daughter, granddaughter here is in the arena, going to school, I want to be here as a support to you and everyone else, and I'll be in the meetings at all times. I just retired to just watching TV and waiting for the Royals to win one. And
You'll be waiting?
But before, I'm going to give you your gift. I'm not going to shake your hand.
Excuse me, three minutes are up.
That's good. I knew you'd say that. And I'm going to ask my granddaughter to bring my gift to you.
Thank you, Mr. Denham.
There's a reason for that. And I'm, my three minutes are up, and I'm going to sit down, take our bag. I was trying to get away.
You all right, too?
I knew it was coming. And then, and then as I close, and I'm walking back this way, she took a half of 30 seconds of mine, but I want to tell you this. I'm, I planned to call Washington, D.C. last night to talk to Dr. Wallace, Secretary of Education.
Thank you, Felton Denham. We appreciate you.
But I wouldn't call Washington, D.C. I'm in this part of town right now.
Next up, we'd like to call Randy Lopez. Topic: Community Engagement and New Leadership.
I really don't even know how I'm supposed to follow that. Maybe I can have India come back up, and I can get an additional three minutes if she stands here with me? Is that how? I'm new to this, so is that how this works? I don't know. Does that work? Okay. Well, thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you to the Board, to the Board President, to staff, to everyone here, and for giving me time to speak today. And I will try to be brief. Please know that my comments today come from a place of love, a place of inspiration.
Excuse me, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Randy Lopez, and address is 3046 South 46 Terrace in Kansas City, Kansas, 66106.
Thank you.
So I come from a place of love, a place of inspiration, and a place of dedication. I'm here today as a graduate of USD 500 and as a lifelong resident of Wyandotte County, as an engaged and committed resident of our community, and most importantly, as someone who cares deeply about the children and families in our community, just as all of you do too. The last time I was here, I spoke up on accident. I think I was stretching at the very end, and I got called to come up and speak. But I spoke specifically to issues of leadership amongst our Board, more specifically to representation of our diverse community and the strength and opportunity of a diverse body. You see, with 70 different languages spoken in our schools, and nearly 50% of our schools being Latino, I believe that we need leadership that embraces our overall diversity and understands the unique challenges that we face, but at the same time lifts up the assets that all of our diverse communities bring. That begins with our Board, to build the leadership and trust within our schools and community, spreads to our staff, and it also includes us as community to work together. Today, I'm here just to speak briefly on what I feel I've heard is important as we look for our next leader. You all have a very difficult decision to make, and I'm glad I don't have to make that choice for you. We have a couple of finalists to consider, and while both are highly qualified, and I'm not here to speak to their qualifications, I just want to lift up a couple of points that I've heard over and over. First, one of the points that I hear over and over is to grow our own, to have someone who comes from within our community, who reflects our students in our community, to attract and retain KCK's own. You've said that, I've said that, our community has said that, and today we have the opportunity to walk that talk. What better ways to show our kids that we build our students up and have a shining example of that, to attract, retain, grow outstanding quality, caring professionals? You see, KCK is a premier school district in our nation. We strive for that every day, and we need someone committed to that and not looking to us as a next-career move. This isn't another name on a resume. This is a lifelong commitment to our children and families and our community. This is the dream job. In the same way, I feel we want commitments for our students and faculty and staff and the entire KCK community. And far too often, Wyandotte County has known what it's like for folks to parachute in, only to see them leave a few years later. We need someone willing and committed to making KCK their home, their entire home and being ingrained and a part of the entire community and fabric of who we are. Someone who someone who believes in our community as a part of the fabric of who we are and our values. We talk about change, and I agree. Healthy change is good and necessary, but we don't necessarily need someone from the outside to do that. Instead, someone who is willing to lead by listening and understands the fabric of our community. Lastly, we have one of the most diverse counties in our country. I think I mentioned that last time I was up here. And reflected in that is our kids and our school district. And yes, that comes with unique challenges, but just as importantly, opportunities and strengths for growth. And I believe we have the chance to work with someone, someone who is a product of our beautiful, diverse school district, who recognizes the strength of having one of the most culturally, ethnically, economically diverse communities, and who has shared those sentiments with many, including myself. Someone who understands the needs of community and works to listen to be part of that solution. Shared values that I think all of you on the Board and that we in community have. Commitment, grow our own, embrace diversity and equity, reflect our community, and continue building on the positive growth that our schools have seen over the years. This is a calling that the Board has made for several months now, one that our community has made for several months now, and the opportunity to walk that talk and grow our own is here, to act with love and kindness and hope and continue to stride forward. So I want to thank you all for your time. I want to thank Dr. Lane for all of her work, her commitment to our community, and to all of our Board members for your work. To President Jones, thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we would like to have Jacqueline Iker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jacqueline Iker. My address is 8141 Troop Apartment 206, Kansas City, Kansas, 66112. Today, I would like to address the consideration of the Superintendent. I, first of all, I'm going to be completely transparent. First of all, I want to say that I absolutely believe in Jocelyn Strickland and his ability to lead this district if chosen. The belief stems from a comment that he made after an interview that I had some time ago. The comment was about the school. Banneker is an oasis in the heart of Kansas City, Kansas. Great things are happening there. You could be a part of this. He was so enthusiastic about the school and working there and the work that was done that it deeply resonated with me and has stuck with me since. Since that time, I've seen him pursue and encourage others to pursue better opportunities for our students in the classrooms beyond and beyond. I know that the Board has concerns about the broken pieces of our system, and rightfully so. I respect that you're seeking to understand the challenges that we face and are searching for solutions. No one will ever argue against better opportunities for our students or environments for them. However, we're not all broken pieces. Teachers, coaches, and principals work hard to get wins for our students, and our district leadership has provided structures and learning opportunities to ensure those wins. So a question that I have is how do we ensure that we don't lose the wins in transition because the learning has been very consistent and intense? The staff and students are invested. Some of those wins include, in the primary grades, their work in writing, their work with understanding and going deeper with reading assessments, the math curriculum and the revising of it. In the secondary, diploma plus, the academies, the students being able to talk about the careers that they want and how they're going to get there, and across the Board, from the primary to the intermediate, their knowledge of the model instruction and good instruction. But my most important question is, how will we ensure that the leadership that we true, that we choose truly understands the depth and the breadth of the work that's happening here in KCK and has a clear commitment to our students and the community? Sometimes, it's easy to overlook the contributions of people who have always been there. They don't often toot their own horns. I truly believe that Dr. Strickland's ability to lead the USD 500 community is selected. I believe he will listen to I believe he will listen to the concerns of the board, their suggestions and fix those, and their suggestions in fixing those broken pieces. He already understands the work, the wins, and the challenges, and he believes in the work that he does. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration, and I hope that maybe in some of those questions that you will be able to move further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eddie Wright, attributes of the next superintendent.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Lane. My name is Eddie Wright, I live at 2005 Elizabeth Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66102. My name is Eddie Wright, and I live in a neighborhood directly behind Wyandotte High School. I've given my all to this district from my student teaching days at Wyandotte to my position now as Lead Instructional Coach for secondary schools. First of all, I want to say thank you for your service. If you decide that this is a calling for us, and I appreciate your dedication to that. Dr. Lane, I especially want to thank you for your service. I hope that your next endeavor gives you passion and fulfills you as much as this work has. Whatever you decide to do next, if you have an "are you faster than a whatever", please call me, roof to five has been one of the best days of the year. My comments will be brief in relation to the extremely difficult decision you have to make regarding the next superintendent and the work that must go on from here. I realize this decision is just one of thousands you've been elected to make. This is not about my opinion on who that should be. I've shared that via email and exit slips. I'm embracing Dr. Strickland's call to fully support whomever fills that seat next. What I want to share is the message that represents many of us who are aspiring leaders that so desperately want to see some changes and progress that you each long for as well. Our kids, our community, my neighbors, and yours deserve it. The picture I want to paint is that this change we, we want is already in place, and what we need is refinement and not a complete change of vision nor steps backwards. We have schools and individuals who are using data in the best way possible. We need to expand and learn from those that understand how to do this. We have individuals and teams that are desperate about improving literacy throughout the system. We need to learn and have them lead us. The notion of establishing a culturally responsive culture is well on its way. We need to continue to deepen our understanding of all individuals. We have an instructional framework that establishes understanding for strong pedagogical practices, and it brings everything I mentioned above together. We need to learn from those that are implementing it and seeing successes and follow them. We must continue to learn from each other and grow our own leadership. The knowledge on how to move forward exists within this room, it exists within KCK. We are better together, and we must continue to refine our function as a team. I often say that a system should focus on three things: leadership development, personal development, and team development. As a teacher who is privileged to sit at the table with coordinators and directors on a weekly basis, I want to thank Dr. Strickland for empowering me to continue to question the decisions that he makes and asks us to do. I look for ways to help the system move forward and how to be a loyal follower of the leaders in front of us. I encourage each of you to get to know one of the aspiring leaders that I mentioned earlier. I get a chance to work with the instructional coaches on a daily basis. This is one group that have, that has the best perspective on the system. They have a building perspective, a classroom perspective, and a district perspective. They are some of the most critical people I know, but at the same time, they are there offering support, guidance, and coaching, helping to build resilience in everyone around them. They truly remind me of the Stockdale Paradox that many of us are familiar with. Admiral Stockdale eloquently sums it up by saying, "I never lost faith in the end of the story." So my point is this: we are more alike than different, and we have the knowledge on how to fix this within the field. We must empower the people, we are better by working together. As we head into the Fourth of July weekend, or as my neighbors call it, three weeks of shooting off fireworks, I want to paint the image that we are more like a firework that's about ready to take off. We're at the top, we just haven't exploded, we're ready to shine for everybody, and we're near the top. Let us just keep charging forward, stay the course, and I thank you for your time and hearing me out on this.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to have Shante Bailey, topic: Community Engagement.
I have a graphic that, I don't know how I get it up there to you. Well, I couldn't really reach it when I was down there. My name is Shanta Bailey. My address is 2221 North Thirty-Sixth Street, Kansas City, Kansas 66104. And I am an alum of the district, a proud Sumner Academy class of nineteen eighty-nine graduate. What I have here is a picture of a school bus. Now imagine for a moment that this bus represents the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, USD 500. Onboard this bus is our most precious cargo, our students. The students of this community board this bus with the expectation they will arrive safely at their destination, the school building. Parents and guardians put their precious children on the bus, and they have the expectation that not only will their children arrive safely at the school building when they board that bus every day, every year, that their children will walk away in the end with at, at the very least, a high school diploma or diploma plus, technical education, or gainful employment. The community sees the children boarding those buses also with an expectation that those young people will contribute to building our community. There is an enormous amount of pressure on that bus driver. The hopes and dreams of families, children, and our community are riding not only on his shoulders, but on that bus. The road that bus has to travel on in Kansas is not without obstacles. One obstacle is the climate. Not just the weather, but also the political climate that has been difficult to navigate. Student achievement levels can be a sharp curve, and resources have to be managed to straighten that out. The diversity in our district is a wonder to behold as we look out the windows of the bus as well as the students on the bus. It is a cross and a crown, because the environment is enriched when we rise to the challenge of making sure everyone has what is needed to achieve, and securing and managing those resources can be difficult. My question to you is, whom do you trust to drive that bus? A driver that is more than familiar with the climate, the community, and the obstacles? A driver that understands the role of driving the bus, but also understands that it takes an entire community to increase student outcomes? A driver with the professional experience and credentials to navigate the roadmap of Kansas education? A driver that himself has ridden that bus? These are our precious children, and we don't trust them to just anyone. I thank you for your time and your opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Tiffany Dixon, District Continue to Grow.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Dixon, and my address is 9236 Mackey Street, Overland Park, Kansas 66212. All right, good evening, board, it's good to see a lot of you again. I've been before you, usually I don't write my thoughts, I just kind of say them off the cuff, but the three-minute limit, we'll stick to that. So I've been before you as a member of the team at Washington High School, and in representation of some of the district work that I've been involved in. As a teacher, I am a part of the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Even though I do not live in the district, I am a part of this community. Right now, I'm before you as a concerned community member. Like each individual in our community, I am entitled to an opinion and the ability to advocate for the changes I want to see. I sincerely appreciate that the Board of Education's made it easy for us to share our opinion, and I have emailed my opinions about the next superintendent, so I'm not going to get into that, because I've told you. I've attended meetings, small group meetings, I've engaged in conversations probably with almost every person sitting up there. So you're familiar with my personality and where I'm coming from. I've also attended speaking sessions and attended board meetings, and when I haven't been here, I've listened by YouTube. Okay, let's see, I may not, sometimes I do, I often do get my way, but I don't always get my way. And that's okay. So even when I don't get my way, my advocacy and my work continue, that's part of public service. That said, increasingly over the last year, I have seen, and I'll list, social media and news publications of opinion pieces confused with facts. Local news highlights of some good, but mostly focused on stories related to conflict or drama. I am at Washington High School, I know these stories personally, and they've impacted all of us. A wealth of news about our progress that has left, has been left untapped, and biased information on publications from interest groups with their own goals in our system. I am a member of some of these groups, so I know that we have our own interests. I want to acknowledge that it is not okay for any of our leaders, board members, staff members, in buildings or outside, to feel or be threatened, for gossip, rumors, and lies to replace the actual words and intentions of our leaders, staff, parents, and students. For misinformation to create a sense of fear among students, parents, staff, or the community, whether that be physical fear, emotional, for people's jobs. And I want to say that it's not okay for us to stop working to differentiate between facts and opinions. We cannot just give up and say that's just how it is. What I do want to see, I want to see the facts. I want the opinions of others, I want to see the opinion pieces too. I want to see a safe place for the community to ask questions and process that we are experiencing. Okay, I think that, so the solution portion of this. I think we need a reliable, unbiased resource to help set a foundation of factual knowledge related to our school district, the work we do, and the outside issues that impact us. This will be more and more important as we move forward. It's one thing to start a discussion about our opinions, and we all have them, and we're all entitled to them. It's another when we can't engage in a conversation that's rooted in the same facts, but then you get into your own personal experiences and impact your actual opinion. I find it difficult to even engage in a meaningful, useful conversation with people because we all have different ideas of what the facts are. If this type of resource exists, then please provide a link on the district homepage so everyone can access it. It's important that whoever creates this resource, their livelihood not be connected to it. As soon as we are receiving a paycheck, it's difficult for us to stick to the facts instead of getting into our own opinions and being influenced. I also think that if this resource does not exist, and Dr. Iger, you asked me during one of our first meetings what I'd be willing to help with, and I told you I'm picky about what I work on. If this resource does not exist, then I'm interested in serving as a community volunteer on a team that will help create it. I do not have all the answers, I don't think any one person does. But I do have ideas about ways to get it started. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Merle Bland with the Business West Inc., topic: School Millevi.
I am Merle Bland, I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66112. And my wife, Carol, and I have lived in Wyandotte County since nineteen sixty-four. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the Kansas City, Kansas School Board. As in past years, I would ask you to hold the line when it comes to property taxes for the district's budget for the coming year. Business West has about eighty members, mostly small businesses. Property taxes are a major consideration for most of these small businesses. It is also a consideration for a business that is considering moving here. Property taxes are also a factor that affects residential development. In my case, as both a residential and commercial property taxpayer, a third of my tax bill goes to the Kansas City, Kansas School District. I continue to be concerned about the low graduation rate for the district. Even more disturbing is the fact of those who have received diplomas but have to take remedial reading and math classes at the community college. It appears that the property valuations in Wyandotte County have increased to about six percent or possibly more. I would hope this means that taxpayers could expect some relief. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Board Updates, Legislative Update by David Smith, the Chief Public Affairs Officer.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I have been coming to you for quite some time and promising you that at some point, I would be able to come to you with a decision from the Supreme Court in the Gannon versus the State of Kansas case. Yesterday afternoon, the Supreme Court rendered their decision. It is a positive one for the district. We've got some good news won, that we will be able to start school in August, and that was incredibly important, I think, to everyone here and in this community. The court did hold that the school finance system in Kansas continues to be unconstitutional with regard to adequacy. In other words, there still continues not to be enough in the school finance system to meet the constitutional test for adequacy. This time, and it's a little bit different than some previous times, they did offer more direction. What they pointed out was that the legislature, at certain points in their five-year funding cycle, recognized that the Consumer Price Index or that inflation was something to take into account. One of the arguments that we on the plaintiff's side made was that inflation for the school finance system as a whole is somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred million dollars a year. So that if you're giving a hundred million dollars of increase, you're basically covering inflation and a little bit more. That's not enough to get to adequacy. And that was essentially what the court bought. They said that next year, because inflation's built in, they're not going to require it, but for the four years that follow, they will require the legislature to go back and to put in a factor for inflation. They have said that that needs to happen during the next legislative session, beginning next January. They have set dates for argument and for hearing on what the legislature has done. So they've essentially said, "We're going to give you one more year to, to fix this", and they've given more direction for how to fix it. Their reactions were relatively predictable, I think, that school advocates and those who advocate for, advocate for children were pleased that they will see additional resources. Those who don't advocate for more support for schools continue to talk about constitutional amendments and other kinds of pretty negative actions. But in the end, we have a, we have a ruling that favors schools, favors more money for schools, and allows us to start in August. I think that's probably the best we could have hoped for. Any questions?
Yeah, David, I do. Could, could, what is the, what's the definition of adequacy?
The, the court in determining adequacy, it is to ensure that we have a system that is designed so that all students can meet the Rose Factors. Now, the Rose Factors, we talked about previously, they come originally from a court decision out of Kentucky, but they basically are sort of outcome measures that talk about what a student would need, need to be able to do to have successfully graduated from high school and be able to go on to college or participate in society. So there's some specific factors which I don't have in front of me. But the, they, the court uses the Rose Factors to determine what, when the, the system has met its goals, and an adequately funded system would be designed so that all children could meet those factors. You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, before you leave the podium, we are very grateful and thankful for the work that you've done for the last thirteen years for the district, so thank you very much.
Now, we have a bond update by Dr. Kelly Mather.
Madam President, Board Members, good evening. Dr. Lane. Just pausing for a moment, that's what I wanted to see, so I could get this, I'll get it from here, I think. Wanted to take a few minutes to do the bond update. First of all, as I'm just kind of setting this a little bit, it's nice to have a full house to be able to kind of brag on behalf of the Board and brag on behalf of the community of the bond projects, so I'll be able to give the full community a quick update, try not to get in too many of the details, but I think I'll show you several pictures. And then, following the bond update, your first two agenda items, we get to brag about the Board's and the community's bond projects with the new elementary school and one of the new middle schools, so we'll be excited to be able to share that with everyone this evening here and keep the momentum of passion and positive communication up, so. Just wanted to point out to you, as far as the bond update, that on your board docs, you have the monthly report, not changed, does have the May expenditures at just over four point two million dollars. I've shared with you a number of times that we're going to start seeing those expenditures go up, because now, as I show you all of the pictures and the updates that you have in your second attachment, you're going to clearly see that, frankly, we're busy. We're really busy right now this summer, and we're doing lots and lots of projects, so I believe we're on track in regards to our expenditures at this point. So the only thing that your monthly update is showing you is your monthly May expenditures to date. We do not have any new guaranteed maximum price or GMPs to offer. We have not sent out another bid package yet, but you have all of the ones that we've shared with the Board to date on the review. With that, I'm going to jump to the highlights. Usually, Mr. Mark Stubalo is with me, Assistant Director of the Shop. He's not here, he's enjoying some time with his family, as he should this summer, so I told him I would take on the task of trying to explain some of these pictures, so I'll do my best for you. I think that the Board has found these to be somewhat helpful, and it provides a quick kind of highlight and overview of what's happening right now in multiple schools, as I said. As we kind of go through some of these pictures, I think the community can appreciate all of the projects that we're doing and a lot of work that we're doing. We'll start with Wyandotte High School. As you know, we're actually replumbing the entire school, which is a significant project. We're also redoing science rooms, we're also doing the academy spaces in the high school, and we're also doing a secure entrance at Wyandotte High School, which means that when you enter into the school, you'll see a reconfigured and new office area with secure entrance. So essentially, as you look at these pictures, what you see is that we're kind of tearing things up. And if you go into any of our buildings right now, you're going to see a lot of that. So this picture here is the courtyard, which is really in the center area of the school, and that's all being dug up, all for plumbing purposes and sewer lines. Picture just to your right is a project Lead the Way. It's one of the classroom spaces that we're designing, an academy. I believe Mark spoke with you at the last board meeting that we're opening up this space, and you'll see a lot more glass. That's going to be a really nice space. Right now, it's still in the middle of construction. This is a picture of one of many of the restrooms in the facility, which will all be completely new-looking when renovated, including all new fixtures. And then finally, the picture down here to the far bottom right for Wyandotte High School is actually a crane hoisting over a piece of equipment over the top of our building. I'm not sure what that piece of equipment is. I think we'll call it a backhoe. Don't know if that's the name of it or not, but that's what I'm going to call it. Something that, it's something that digs holes. But to get it in the courtyard, they had to lift it over the building. Well, I got to tell you, it's a little scary. The first day they started to try to do that, I just want to share this quick story with you. They're getting ready to lift this backhoe, that's what we're going to call it, up over the building, and they realize that one of the cables was broke on the crane. So we're really glad that they didn't have it up in the air over Wyandotte High School at the time, so, and they were able, they went through their regular check of equipment, I guess, found that out, but they got it fixed and taken care of. The backhoe now is in the courtyard, and that's doing the digging that you saw in the picture up at the top, so. Lots and lots of work. As I go through these, I probably should always say that we want to give lots of credit and accolades to our school administrators and to the staff in these buildings who have been so helpful in getting this work done. I mean, we truly, as you are going to see with these pictures, are kind of tearing up some spaces. And all of this has to be repaired and ready to go at the beginning of school in August, so we are on track for that. So I won't talk that much with each one, I promise. So Sumner Academy, we're also doing similar work with redoing all of the plumbing in the school. So we, this is a picture of a bathroom that we are essentially completely guiding all of the restroom areas so that we can fix them up again and replace all the fixtures and do all new plumbing in the school. Picture down at the bottom here is actually what one of the classrooms used to look like. That's not what it looks like, and I have to tell you, it keeps, makes me, makes me nervous every time I walk these schools, thinking, how are we going to get them back together? But we've totally torn everything out, and that will be one of the science classrooms for Sumner Academy, and they'll all be completely brand-new. Excited about that. Claude Hike Elementary School, had a student here talking about this school. What we're showing here is that with Claude Hike, is that we will have the new addition ready to go. So the new addition is a sixth classroom addition with Claude Hike. We will have also a secure entrance completed. This is just some of the wall area as we go into the existing school. This is the framing for that wall, and this is actually a picture of the new addition that you see outside. So it's actually coming up, putting ceilings on it, or not ceilings, the roof on it, and closing it in, so we will hopefully have it done and completed by the beginning of school. Eugene Ware is another one of our elementary schools that we're doing some mechanical and electrical and plumbing roughing. We're doing lots of demo right now in May and in June, throughout June, so we can put it back together, and then July for the August start. We are doing at Eugene Ware, a kitchen remodel, so we are utilizing, this is all of kind of tearing out the area where the kitchen's going to be, and also access and utilizing a part of, portion of where the stage is going to be, so we're actually making a bigger, more usable kitchen where students can actually walk there and pick up their meals. Eugene Ware also will be getting a secure entrance, as all schools will. Just trying so hard not to do that. Grant Elementary. We are in the process of working on not only the stage demo for their kitchen remodel, we're also redoing a media center at the school, we're also putting on a classroom addition. The picture down below, you can kind of start seeing that they're pushing around some dirt and actually doing earthwork to get the classroom addition in place. It is a sixth classroom addition as well. And they will, too, have a secure entrance when it's all completed, meaning that we are redesigning the entire entryway and the office to accommodate for the secure entrance. The addition for Grant Elementary School won't be complete by the beginning of school. Because of the later start on that, that will be in progress, is still being designed and won't interrupt the progress of school, but we anticipate having that open hopefully around November, December timeframe. So the school's really working closely with us on making sure that we aren't disrupting education in the process. Morse Elementary, or Morse Early Childhood Center, is actually focused on getting a new secure entry. Doesn't look too secure in this particular picture, but it is actually going to be a secure entry when they're all done. Essentially, what that's going to do is force all of our visitors to enter in through an office area or a particular vestibule, and we know who's in our buildings at all times, so that's what Morse Elementary is working on. There's also several other projects, as you can see on these handouts of things that are coming up, including some roof work and sheet rock work and interior finishes for the school. Silver City, also working on the secure entryway. And if you're familiar at all with some of our schools, as I know you've been in many of them, all of them have different entries, and all of them don't have offices right next to the front door. Silver City does have the office that sits right next to the front door, but there's a huge vestibule area that they have to create a secure entrance for. So they sent me this picture on this update, and I had to ask, quite honestly, what is this? What is this picture of? Why are you sending me a picture of the ceiling? Because that's what it looks like, and that's exactly what it is. Apparently, they're roughing in the ceiling so they can drop an appropriate wall for the secure entries for Silver City. Thought that was kind of a lot of detail, but okay, that, that was our picture for Silver City. Stony Point North. This is the other school that we're putting on a fourth classroom addition, and also doing the secure, actually, Stony Point North, they're getting a secure entrance because they're getting a new office area. The actual entrance for Stony Point North will now be on the north side of the building and not the south side of the building. So inside of this entire building, that we walked just the other day, pretty much everything is, is torn up. And you can see down below here, if I can get this to go down, the addition is, is up, and it's framed in, they're putting the brickwork on it now, and they will start the interior work this next month. Arrowhead Middle School. The focus for Arrowhead Middle School with our bond efforts has been to actually replace the entire heating and cooling system for the entire school. All of that work has been put in, all the duct work has been installed in the facility, ran all of the new duct work throughout the school. That resulted in also having to look at each individual classroom, which we knew we would be doing as we ran duct work through each classroom to ensure that they all had heating and cooling, or appropriate heating and cooling. We've also, as a result of that, we are painting every classroom. We are looking at all-new flooring in all the classrooms, all-new flooring in the hallways for the school. We're also developing their career exploration spaces, so we have two significantly large areas where students will have an opportunity as a destination place to go and explore potential careers as middle school students, which is also part of the bond referendum and initiative. This picture here, you can see it says Makerspace, another term vocabulary for the career exploration space. That is going to be highlighted in the school. Arrowhead also is getting a secure entrance, and that is a very difficult thing to do at Arrowhead Middle School as you walk in, so the actual configuration of the office is completely different. We're splitting the existing office in two and changing the configuration of the hallway, and we're adding the office space in those two different sections, so we'll have this whole front entry, which is completely torn up there, all reconfigured, so when folks come in, they literally have to walk into the office as all secure vestibules are set up. And this is kind of another shot of the front entryway as you walk into the school right now, inside the school. Lot of work has been done at this school, and we're excited to see the finishes. Welborn Elementary School, of course, is our new elementary school going up, and these pictures are to show you that we have got steel all up, we've got framed some of the CMU walls, the brick walls are going up, and so it's actually starting to take shape and look like an actual building. And when you get a chance, you should all go by and take a look at Welborn and watch how these folks are constructing this brand-new facility in a very small area. But they're doing it, and they're doing it well. Of course, the new Gloria Willis Middle School is the same situation. They've erected a lot of their steel, put in all of their foundation work, and we'll start seeing through the steel, all of the walls, exterior walls go up, and we'll be hanging precasts. We actually have a camera on Gloria Willis Middle School, so we're taking live shots of the construction of that, and we'll have to bring you a video of that, clips of it. We'll try to get that for some of our updates in the future. So that's kind of everything that's going on. We're impacting a great number of schools, lot of work, hundreds of workers out there working in our schools, and we appreciate them and appreciate the staff and the administration as we move forward this summer for completion for the beginning of the school year, eighteen nineteen. Also, just wanted to share with you, just as a reminder, that J.E. Dunn is putting on a Construction Workforce Industry Day to be hosted and held at Washington High School. We hope all of our construction's done by them. Scheduled for July twelfth, they have hosted a similar event, not within our district, but in another community where they had over three hundred folks come. I think they shared that with you all when we were at their place for a special board meeting. Great turnout for folks to talk to construction folks and people in the industry and have an opportunity to seek opportunities for employment and work. So we're excited about that. Please try to make an effort to go up to Washington on the twelfth, between eleven and one, if you'd like to stop in. We'd love to see you out there, but that's an exciting thing, but I want to make sure you have that flyer. So there's your bond update. For you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Lane.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones, and I know that there's a family in the House that will be excited for this next agenda item. The Bruni family is with us tonight. So we ask that the Board accept as an informational item, design documents for the Lowell Bruni and John Fisk Elementary Schools as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Want to share briefly some information regarding our new Lowell Bruni Elementary School. So we are excited to have the architects present with us this evening, and I'm going to introduce them momentarily. Wanted just for you all, Board, to understand and get an appreciation through this informational item, kind of where we're at in design. This is still kind of a design document level. Lot of work has gone into thinking about how these facilities are going to look, the new facilities, so I think you will appreciate what these schools are starting to kind of develop into. HTK is the architect for us with the elementary sites, doing not only the renovation, but also all the brand-new schools, and the Lowell Bruni Elementary School is certainly one of those. That team is led by Gordon Kimball, who is a partner with the firm with HTK, and I'll have Gordon introduce Scott and any other members that are with him on his team. Wanted to share with you that the new address for the Lowell Bruni Elementary School is 2301 North Ninety-first Street. That is an official address now, the Unified Government has provided that for us. I will give you a couple highlights, and I don't want to steal their thunder, I'll let them show you their pretty pictures, it's more fun to listen to them, but just as a recollection, this is a two-story facility, just over seventy-two thousand square feet, and it is designed to serve approximately five hundred and fifty students. So with that, I'll ask Gordon to come on up, and whomever he has with him. Gordon Kimball is a partner with HTK. Scott Haslick, I'll have you introduce your books.
Okay, good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thank you for the privilege of sharing our designs today. With me is Scott Hazlitt as well, and he'll be talking about one of the elementary schools that we're doing in addition to John Fisk, so you'll get to see a little bit of visual on that one. But our primary feature here tonight is going to be a overview of our design progress on Lowell Bruni Elementary School. The first page, you see some of the images we have from Frank Rushton, so we've been also involved with Frank Rushton and Welborn Elementary School as well, so we've got a pretty good launching pad to go into Lowell Bruni here. Just to get you oriented, Lowell Bruni will be located near Parallel Parkway and Ninety-first Street, so the site here is outlined with the white dotted line. So it's a pretty good-sized site, hard to find, something that would fit the full needs of an elementary school within the boundaries of the schools that are going to be feeding it, which would be White Church and Bethel Elementary Schools. Zooming in a little bit further here, we're going to take a look at the site itself and how that's laid out. We, we went through quite a process to determine the best placement for the building. We looked at the topography, the drainage, sightlines, approach to the school, safe entry access from Ninety-first Street, and also keeping the kids safe on the backside of the site, not intermixing them with the public traffic. We also looked at bus loading and parent pickup times and queuing lengths, to be sure those were optimized on this site. As Dr. Mather mentioned, it will be a two-story building, that's the necessary density we're going to have to have to fit it on this site and be efficient. There is still quite a bit of drop-off, and there's some woods and some ravines and things in here, and we want to keep a lot of trees, as many as we can, to keep a natural look to that side and to screen from some of our neighbors and not just put a big wall up against their property. against their property. So always something that we keep in mind. On the floor plans, we have divided this into a couple of different areas. You can see the blue star indicates the front entry, which would face towards 91st Street. And we'll have a secure entry, like all the elementary schools, all the schools that we are doing in this bond issue. So you'd be forced in through the administration vestibule area. Once you come out of that into a Main Street-type corridor, this would be more of a space that's a little bit bigger, a little bit taller, have a nice feel to it, and you'll be able to access some of the more public spaces, the multipurpose room or cafeteria, the gymnasium, the media center. Of course, there'll be restrooms accessible from there. One of the concepts being that you'll be able to use this space in the evenings and not allow everybody back into the classroom area where it might be a little more sensitive. Also, music and art in that space. The other large bar of our layout here is the classroom wings. We've kept kindergarten, first grade, and second grade on the ground floor to make it safer for them to exit in the event of emergency, not getting run over by the big kids on the stairs. Flip real quick to our next one. So that classroom wing does extend to the second level. We've got our third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders up there, as well as all the spaces that are needed to support them. Now, some more pretty pictures here for you. We have done some massing on this building. We are through our design development stage. We're working through construction documents, wanting to get this thing out to bid with J.E. Dunn here in the fall so it can get queued up to start construction in the spring and then open up the following August. So that's our timeline on it. The color palette that we're looking at is kind of a copperish color brick with some other neutral tones. And then the color blue is something we're going to bring forward as well, signifying the main entry. That blue color is one of the school colors of both of the schools that are feeding into this school. So there's a view from the main pathway towards the school. As you enter from either a car or if you're walking, this is what you're going to see as you approach the school. Of course, the large, two-story tall space in the blue is your main entry. The office area being to the left, we've got a fun outdoor learning space there to the right side, we'll get into a little bit later. Starting to spin around the school a little bit, so you see the corner there with the media center, or what we used to call the library, is exposed. It's looking more towards a natural part of the site. We'll see some vegetation out of there. It also get a lot of good sun, but we are shielding it from direct sunlight, which can affect books and other media in that space. And it also helps to define our outdoor learning area. And we start to see a long view of that classroom corridor or the classroom wing and how we've broken that up with some different articulation. There's the long side, the south side of that classroom wing, and we've used some techniques with our precast articulation and materials to get some different colors and really drawn to the sense of motion and activity that I think is really going to be fun for this elementary school, especially considering the Bruni legacy and the activity and just the physical education nature of that. So we've got a lot of horizontality, a lot of motion going on here. We spin around to the other side. This would be our playground side, so secure playground area, looking back towards the areas of the classrooms. And then we've started to gone a little vertical in our articulation here with the gymnasium and multipurpose room spaces. Those are taller spaces and we're going to follow that through on the inside as we'll see in the coming slides to get a lot of connection from in to out there. Of course, every classroom's got windows. We want to make sure to connect the kids to the outside environment. Staff loves it, too. Don't want to be trapped in the middle somewhere. Coming in through the front door, we've got some conceptual renderings of our, this would be the reception area. So again, kind of the hub of this space, activity central here. And so the idea of the lines coming in and out, really showing this as the nerve central, the hub of all information at the school. So it also will be where you'll check in, the secure process. And then a journey down the Main Street area. So again, evoking this concept of motion, we want to start pulling people through this space and we're going to do some things with lights and perforations on the ceiling and a lot of linear elements to get you through to the different pieces and parts that are along this Main Street area. The one you see right here up front is the media center. So right by the front door, that's going to be a space that a lot of folks are going to want to use throughout the day and also in the evenings, possibly weekends. That would be a shared-use space there for the community. Speaking of the media center, we've got some shots inside here. This would be the circulation desk and utilizing the front of that to do some things with displaying books and really putting a showcase out there for reading. It's going to be a very diverse space in terms of heights of different spaces, breaking them up for reading activities, more leisurely and structured in classroom areas, also heights of spaces with low spaces and high spaces and different materials. Here's another view in there of a more of a casual reading area, some soft seating along the windows to get some natural light where kids can do some self-guided learning and reading. And right outside the window to that media center is an outdoor learning environment where we can do a lot of different activities. You see kind of a sunken garden here with some turf in it and these boulder-type elements that kids can climb on, sit on, really do a multitude of different activities in. And we've got some tables there, too, for activities, whether structured or free. Potentially could even go out with a small group, have their lunch out there on a nice day. So I think that's going to be a really fun space to be in. At the core of this school, there'll be a stairway. It is a two-story building, so we want to do some fun things with the stair, again, to encourage this vertical motion now. So we've got a lot of verticality in the guardrails and the lines around this stair and color, again, being a major component of that and the identity of the school with that blue from the previous two schools. This is an image from the cafeteria or multipurpose room, and there's a large opening. If you've been to Frank Rushton, you've kind of seen something like this in real life. That big wall can open up and you can have that space extend into the gymnasium. So that's what you see back there with the basketball goal. That's the gymnasium space. But this is a very fluid space. We wanted to strengthen that concept with a lot of curved lines and flowing motion as kids are kind of circulating through here throughout the day, getting their lunch and doing any other activities that I want to get scheduled in here. Taller space. And then the gymnasiums are tall as space. It will also double as our high-wind refuge area or a storm shelter area. So the entire population of the school and any evening events could be safe in here if there was an emergency storm event. This idea of vertical motion is what we're stressing in here with some of our acoustical panels and our paint schemes. And you see on the ceiling there is the precast structural concrete that's creating that safe hardened structure. So that's kind of a brief overview of where we've gone at Lowell Bruni. I think the next thing we wanted to show is on John Fisk.
Just wanted to say that we wanted to take a few minutes, questions first about Lowell Bruni and what you've seen and some of the renderings before we move on.
In one of the shots, it had someone in a wheelchair and I didn't see.
There we go.
The buildings are handicap accessible, right?
Absolutely, 100%. Yeah. So, but you don't see, there's an elevator right on the other side. That look is pretty in the picture.
Well, I'm not. I didn't see it. I just saw the person in the chair.
Good question, yeah. Stairs and a wheelchair, that begs a question, doesn't it?
It looks very exciting. Wonderful pictures. I can actually see it in my mind. And that way, you can use the multipurpose room and the gym together. Spaces is wonderful. So thank you very, very much.
I just want to say I enjoy, it's beautifully designed, something for our kids to be able to go and just feel at ease of the fact of learning. And then it's because it's user-friendly, I like that. And just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Keep the images in mind because when we actually build it, it's going to look just like that. Be close.
I got a quick question. What is the, what kind of material is the outside playground made out of?
Yeah, so there'll be a couple of different surfaces that comprise the play areas. So you'll have the hard surface, where you'll do your four-square basketball and things like that. That'll be an asphalt surface. The soft play area, where like the equipment you climb on and it has to have a fall zone that absorbs impact. I think right now, wood chips is the preferred flooring for that area. Other options would be rubber chips or rubber tile, but I think that what the district is going with right now is the wood chips.
Play area.
The soft play. Yeah, then we have the grass areas as well. We've got a soccer field that's grass, natural grass.
Thank you.
So I'm going to keep Gordon and Scott up here. We wanted to beg a little bit more of your time since the board has approved the addition for John Fisk. And I don't know if you feel this way, but I'm visual. I like to kind of see what we're doing. So they've done some renderings on the John Fisk Elementary addition and I've asked them to share those with you all this evening.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So we'll just real quickly go through this because I know you have a full agenda tonight. So very similar sort of concepts, but at John Fisk, the main issue is that we've got the portable classrooms out back. There's four classrooms there. The multipurpose area is not sufficient in terms of either the kitchen or the square footage for the population of the school. So what we've proposed in our proceeding with is an addition to the school on the west side where the playground is currently. We actually have to take that over and construct the addition so we can leave the existing portable classrooms in place and functioning while we're building the addition to the school. So at the end, we're going to have an addition on the west side where the portables are currently is going to become the new playground. It's actually back in behind the building and will have a little bit more secure than kind of the situation we have right now. Project consists of the addition to the west and then turning the existing multipurpose area into two additional classrooms. So I'll go straight to the layout. The plan to the right shows how we are going to turn the existing multipurpose area kitchen into two new classrooms to replace two of the four, as well as some more office space for some of the special instruction that goes on inside the building. The addition, for code purposes, as well as some opportunity, is separated from the existing building by creating a courtyard. It's not necessarily showing up here, but there will be an ornamental, high-value fence gate system across here to create an interior courtyard that can be used by the school for some outdoor learning. As well, we have, in our project, we have a multipurpose area that is acting as a high-wind shelter area for the building. That's something that we've done at Claude Hike and Stony Point North as well. So when we're doing an addition to the building, we're taking the opportunity to create a safe environment for the kids in a high-wind event. We're getting a new kitchen, properly sized for the number of students. I think Josh was very excited about the layout that we've shown him so far, so we're excited to do that. New restrooms and two new classrooms with some storage, both for PE as well as table storage as we move forward. This building is going to be constructed similar to the other projects with precast panels, but the precast will have a brick veneer on it, potentially a dark brown, exposed aggregate. We're investigating that still. This is just sort of showing some of the massing. The massing of the gym is kind of tied into the articulation that's going on in your existing gym, but it's going to be a big piece of the front door of the building. There's no way to really get around that, but we sort of push that towards the back and we're stepping the building down towards the street for both the kitchen addition, which you can see there in the front, as well as the classroom addition on the right to kind of try to bring the scale down as we go towards the street. We're proceeding with documents on this and should be August of 2019 when this facility is ready to open.
Thank you.
Would you be able to clarify? You mentioned that two classrooms would be new inside, but there will be two mobile classrooms remaining?
No, I'm sorry. So we've got, we need to replace four classrooms as portable. So there will be two new classrooms in the existing gym and then the addition will also have two additional classrooms. So that gets us to the four classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
We're replacing.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Both of those projects are very exciting, board, so thank you for your work on that. So now, board, we're ready for you to, well, first of all, Dr. Mather, you want approval except of the informational item. I shouldn't have jumped in. Madam President?
Just approval for the informational item on the two schools.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's okay. I'd like to have a motion to accept the design documents.
So moved.
Motion been made and second to approve the documents as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Now.
Now, thank you. We ask that you accept as an informational item the design documents for the Carl B. Bruce Middle School as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Board, we're excited also to share with you and the community this evening the new Carl B. Bruce Middle School design. Hollis and Miller is the architects that have been working with us and leading much of the work for the bond referendum and taking care of all of our secondary schools. Thank you. This team is actually led by the client leader, Nicole Young, who's with us this evening, and also Stephanie Keaton, who is a design developer, I believe is her title, but all architects, and we're excited to have them here. I don't think Stephanie's here. She also is enjoying time with her family as she should this summer. So I would ask Nicole to come to the podium and I just want to give you a couple tidbits about this school and I won't steal Nicole's thunder. But the address for the Carl B. Bruce Middle School at this point is likely to be 2100 North 18th Street. You might ask, why would that address change since we're building on our same property? Because it is down south enough that the Unified Government is looking at an address change for that from 2400 North 18th to 2100 North 18th Street. It might be a good thing anyway, just to denote the new school and it's Carl B. Bruce Middle School. It is a two-story facility. I'm sure Nicole will go over some of this. Just over 130,000 square feet and it is going to be designed to serve approximately 750 students. So Nicole, thank you for being here and I'll let you take over. I think just the arrow will get you through.
Okay. If I need the stool, I can. Fourth grader does. That's kind of embarrassing, but I might use it. That's right. At least I can see over the podium that way. Well, thank you, board, for having us here tonight and allowing us to present this. So this will just give you some orientation on the site. So we are on the northwest side. As you can see up there at the top of the picture is the existing school. Down on the lower part of the site is the kitchen and current warehouse, which will be demolished to make room for the new facility. And you see 18th Street there, along, kind of curving up and along the piece there. So as we rotate a little bit, just to get your bearings, you can see lightly on the right-hand side underneath the green is the existing school up there underneath where it says Playfield and then you've got 18th Street. So you can see the new school dropped in. If you're familiar with that site, you know that there is a lot of topography change on the site and very challenging to try to find a spot to put a building on. And so because of that, we are working with, part of the school is two-story, part is one-story, and when we get to the floor plan, we'll kind of talk about that a little bit more. But you can see overall the site circulation, the blue is outlined. That's indicating car drop-off and the yellow is, are the buses. And so they are separated, try to keep the cars' parent drop-off separated from the bus traffic. The bus traffic, also, there's a loop in the middle where visitors will park as they come to the school during the day to drop off a student or pick up a student, something like that, as they come to the school. To orient you a little bit to the entrances, the red star indicates the main entry to the building. Green star kind of in the middle there, you can see is a secondary entry that can be used for after-hours use. And this location allows the rest of the school to be zoned off so that the classrooms, offices are not accessible to the public in the evening and only the public spaces are available. So we've done some zoning in the building to make that available. And then the red dots you can see throughout the side are indicating pedestrian traffic availability. So as students are walking or riding their bikes to school, you can see those routes highlighted there. So this is the entry. This is where the red star was, indicating the main entry. Carl B. Bruce Middle School, you can see the name of the school announced there that you will be able to see from 18th Street. And in the background a little bit, you see the gray area where it says kind of logo signage. We're developing what that looks like right now, but expecting that'll likely be the mascot up there and kind of announcing the entry and drawing attention to it. You can see the yellow on the bottom side of the soffit, the school colors being black and gold, so that's kind of showing the school colors without too much there and just kind of a subtle, subtle piece there. Similar to the elementary schools, this is a precast building. You do see brick. The brick will be part of the precast panels and the lighter color is some of the exposed precasts that we're giving a nice sandblast finish to. So maintenance-free exterior for all those pieces. And this, of course, is the entry to what will be a secure And this, of course, is the entry to what will be a secure entry, so secure vestibule, very similar to what we're doing at all the other schools. This is starting to see, you can see off to the right, the main entry, but then before you would get to the main entry is the opportunity for visitor entry, not visitor entry, excuse me, after-hours entry that we're highlighting with lights. So in the evening, it'll be kind of well-denoted with lights along that pathway into the courtyard area where we have that secondary entrance. And this is just showing some overall views. So the one on the top is more from the south side where you're seeing the entry to the right, where the building kind of goes in there, the courtyard. That'll be the after-hours entry, and then you can see the gym and some of the other taller spaces off to the left. Again, everything being precast with different types of finish to the precast. This is more from the north side where we talked about earlier, there's one-story and two-story buildings. So you can see from the north, it looks more like a one-story building because it is sitting on top of the hill where the other part kind of dives down, and there's a two-story on the bottom side of that hill. So taking advantage of the topography there. This is kind of a blow-up of that courtyard that has the after-hours entry. Again, developing courtyard, outdoor learning space, trying to make the most of every spot we have on the site, both inside and outside the building, to develop learning space. This could also be used for some outdoor dining. You can see kind of towards the top on the right there, some tables, opportunities, some hard surface where you can have lunch out there on a nice day or have class time, and then just some different types of spaces along those, again, to encourage outdoor learning when the weather is appropriate. And then this is just another shot, kind of looking back, so that'll be your entry after hours as you come in. This is another courtyard around the, on the north side, so this is where the one-story building is. All the classrooms, which we'll see here in just a second, all the classrooms are up on the upper level, which actually happened to be at-grade, even though it's a two-story building, and they have an at-grade entrance. Again, trying to maximize learning space. We have a courtyard that's developed. It's got fencing around it, so it's secure as well. Maintenance-free, hard surface, and then turf inside where you see the green. And then there are some live trees and different things in there, but all the surfaces themselves should be fairly maintenance, low maintenance. So this is floor plan. This is the lower level. You can see the red dot or the red star there on the bottom right. That's the main entry. You go in there, secure entry. We've got the sequence, like, very similar to what you've seen before for Gloria Willis, where there are the bag scanners and the detectors. All that's the entrance. So when you walk in, though, that's not really what you see. You're welcomed with some nice images, which we'll show here in just a second. So the, let's see if my cursor works. Yeah, there we go. So this is the main office area for the school, so you'll walk in, get checked in, and can get into the school. We've got encore spaces down the lower level that everyone has access to. The media center is here. We have very similar, like at Gloria Willis, a life skills area, which is here on the lower level, so it has at-grade entrances, completely ADA-accessible, ground floor. And then this is where the secondary entry is. So at night, when folks come in after hours and there's an event, either in the performance space, the gym, or the cafeteria area, doors can be closed off here and here so that they only have access to these areas, so all the other areas are secure in the building for after-hour zoning. And then we have the cafeteria area, which we'll show some images here in just a second. We've got the performance area, which, similar to Gloria Willis, is a very multi-function space, has the opportunity to have retractable seats for a performance, and then they can be pushed back for other types of flat, flat-surface events, whether it's a big staff meeting or different types of classes being held in there, a lot of different opportunities there. We've got music spaces down here, right adjacent to the performance space, so those can be used for queuing during a performance. And then we've also got the gymnasium. Again, that is a high-wind shelter, just like it was before, kind of a precast box that we're providing there, and then you've got the locker rooms, and then the kitchen area, which serves out into the cafeteria. So that's the lower level. There's some images. This is when you walk into the building, so you can see the little arrow here. You're kind of looking back towards the front entry. So here beyond is kind of a nice welcome graphic that'll be part of that entry sequence as you come in. Hopefully, this guy doesn't drop his boxes when he's coming in there, but. And then as you come in, you're coming down the hallway. As we mentioned, there's encore spaces in there, so we've got computer lab, media center, maker space, all those are part of it. So you can, again, see the yellow as a highlight, kind of the, one of the main school colors. Whoops. Jumped ahead there. We do have visibility into those spaces, so kind of showing off, showcasing what's happening in those spaces. This is in the life skills area. This is kind of an open area, demo kitchen area for the life skills, nice display area, very similar to what was at Gloria Willis. Media center, again, high transparency from the corridor through this space, again, trying to show off what's happening in these spaces. A couple more images of the media center as we walk through. It is a one-story space, but we've tried to raise some volumes and get some nice height in there and variation of different types of learning spaces. So we have, obviously, areas with books. We have small group learning. We have some larger group learning opportunities in there as well. Lots of area for, opportunities for collaboration within that space. This is the eating area, the cafeteria commons area. So again, we mentioned, this is a combination of a two-story, one-story building. So this is, to the right, is really into the hill on the lower level, so that's earth behind that wall, and then on the upper level is where the classrooms are. So the glass up there to the right is where the corridor is that connects the classroom wings that can look down onto the space. It is infilled with glass to try to control noise, but we do have the visual there, as well as trying to get some daylight in from those upper spaces. This is kind of a buried space, so the opportunities for natural light in this area are a little bit limited, but you can see the big yellow light monitors and the ceiling, trying to bring light in from above to make sure that the space is appealing as possible. And you can see beyond is the serving area, and this is kind of flipped around. We're now standing at the serving area, looking back to that space and the two-story volume that we have there. This space connects to the performance space, as you saw in the plan earlier, so there's the seats that can retract back, so you can have a flat floor that's a big, open, multi-use space, or you can have the seats pulled out and a performance set up, maybe a little band concert here in the front. So versatility of space, you could have multi-functions happening, different types in the space. This is the gym, which I mentioned earlier, is a high-wind area, so we've got the main basketball court, as well as cross courts, bleachers for about, a little bit over 700 within that space. And then kind of off to the left are the locker rooms that connect directly to the gym. This is the upper level, so we've got, as I mentioned, all the classrooms are on the upper level, so you've got three wings, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. You do have stairwells at kind of the two ends. You've got stairwell here and a stairwell here, so kids can circulate up and down, so they're never having to go too far without having, where they can go down to eat lunch or go to encore classes to the media center. You can see the blue stars. Those are actually at-grade exits, not intended to be entrances. Those are emergency exits, but also allowing kids to get outside when the time comes for their outdoor learning or PE or whatever the case may be. But it's kind of nice. It's a two-story, but it's at-grade, so they don't have to, exiting and everything is all flat in those areas. So this is the area I mentioned where you walk across and you can look below, down below, to the eating area. And then this is, and then this is a view into one of the team areas, into the classroom wings, and they'll all be denoted with a different color for wayfinding and kind of identity of those neighborhoods. So those can be developed and kind of, the icon of each one will have its identity. And this is inside those wings, and so really trying to maximize every inch of space in these buildings to maximize it for learning. So these are hallways. They don't look like traditional hallways. We have tried to make sure that they're developed and have opportunity for collaborative space, learning space, different sizes of group opportunities. So small group, large groups. When class times, when kids are changing, that becomes much more active space of a hallway, but when everyone's in their class, instead of that space sitting empty, we're able to sort of activate it with some learning by developing some of these items. These are just a couple more shots of those spaces.
Questions?
I know when we were discussing the name committee, there was a question about the track. Are you guys able to preserve the track, or was it able to be incorporated in this design at all? Or is, or is that the soft space, hard space that you had discussed?
Yeah, we will, we're not able to preserve the track because they're essentially building the school on top of it or close to it and a little bit further south. There will be a large playfield area that we are creating where the existing school currently sits, and then you can see that there's quite a bit of ground, so walking kind of space all around there, but not the actual track itself.
And what will that build be made out of?
It'll be grass field.
Okay.
Yeah, grass field.
Will they have space for the memorabilia from the old Northwest? Because I think that was a problem when Sumner was built, the academy. There really wasn't space provided for their memorabilia, so it's still part of their history, their story.
Kind of like an alumni room, maybe, is what you're thinking with the high schools? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I know Wyandotte has an alumni room, but a room where all the old trophies, because it's still a part of their history.
Right.
And you don't want to lose that.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's not a specific room right now designated just for historical perspective, but what we do, and we've done always with all of the new construction that we do, is we take pretty critical elements out of the existing building and incorporate them into the actual new building. So you'll see elements that are very specific to Northwest Middle School built in, and there'll also be, we're also looking at things like historical mural or walls that we will highlight all of the history then of the particular schools. So, and that's not just for Carl Bruce Middle School, but all the schools, so trying to take that into consideration.
Would that still have their trophies?
Yeah, they'll be able to have places throughout the school to display. It's not just a separate room, similar to that, like the high schools have. That's what I was saying. There's not been that particular room set aside.
Both legacy pieces and incorporating the history of Northwest into some environmental graphics at the entry point has been discussed, so those will definitely be items that are included.
Okay.
Again, they're beautiful and functional. Probably a generic question for you, Dr. Mather. Of course, you know, with the devastation of Greensburg, Kansas, it put a new, new meaning on shelters, storm shelters. So I noted that you've, you've covered, addressed that in all of these. Does that mean all of our facilities have, maybe not to the extent of this, but essentially a storm shelter, a safe room?
All of our brand-new facilities, if it's an addition or a brand-new school, all have high-wind shelters. And so their existing schools, we have areas in which have been denoted through the individual schools crisis plan where students go in case of inclement weather, but they're not considered high-wind shelters because they weren't built in the original design.
Will they withstand high wind?
I think that.
We don't want to find out.
Right, right. We hope we don't find out. We hope that every school's identified a safe place for the kids. That's what I can tell you.
Okay.
So that's something that we're moving towards. Obviously, every time we have an opportunity and the, and the board and community continue to support having new facilities, that's a critical area for us, that we want to have those shelters for. And we want them to be big enough, not just for all the kids in the building, but all the teachers and anybody who might be visiting.
So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, Board, thank you for the indulgence, and the community for the indulgence. We wanted to take an opportunity to just brag. I mean, the former Board and the current Board, and certainly all of the community have supported all of the bond projects and the referendum. This is just a simple sampling of it. We're excited about it. It's taken us, you've heard me say, it's taken us over a year to keep designing stuff. We're anxious to build things. We're starting to build things. So you'll start seeing those things come up out of the ground. So I appreciate the indulgence this evening. Thank you to the architectural firms that have continued to work with the school district and designer buildings. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Lane, for approval for the information item. Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to take a motion to accept the designs as presented.
I move. Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you so much.
Dr. Mather, thank you. You've done an outstanding job overseeing the bond referendum. And ladies and gentlemen, applause for those designs. Aren't those schools beautiful? Now into some nitty-gritty work of the district. We ask that the Board approve the proposed employee handbook as submitted by Mr. Thompson, Jody Mitchell, and Amy Troyer.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Lane. I'm returning this evening for a second time after the last board meeting that we had to provide you with the updated handbook, and thank you, Dr. Yager, for getting me connected with the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition. I was able to partner with them, and they were able to provide some recommendations for us that I was able to incorporate into the handbook, page 26. So that's really the only change to the first read is to page 26, where I was able to add those. We also discussed some additional measures the district can do to support our nursing mothers, and so I will be working with our administrators and staffs to make sure that those things are incorporated for years to come. So thank you. Any additional questions or things you would like to discuss regarding the handbook? Wonderful. So it is ready for your action.
Okay. I will take a motion at this time to accept the employee handbook.
So moved. Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the employee handbook. All those in favor? Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Well done.
And I'm here again, so.
Oh, that's right. All right, Board, we're ready for you to approve the employee salary schedules as submitted by that same team I mentioned previously.
Yes, so I'm also here this evening to present the 1819 classified salary schedules for review and potential approval. These schedules that you see include all classified employees and administrators in a format that's familiar to our teachers through the approved class and step format. So once schedules are approved, we post them on our district website so that employees have that to view. It helps them to make decisions on employment, be able to plan and provide knowledge to see what movement for, you know, steps a step looks like. So a few recommendation modifications for the next school year. Those are made based on continued analysis of positions, pay rates, and position responsibilities that we do throughout the year, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about those salary schedules.
Is there, is there the previous schedule or the current schedule posted so that we can compare it? Because I noticed that I didn't get a chance to actively compare the two, because we're still talking about the financial area, and then next month, we are meeting to talk more about the financial matters concerning the two. And I just had a couple of questions related to it, which may be, would lengthen this piece. Is there a way that we could possibly table it so that Mr. Thompson is here also to be thir, to be able to thoroughly explain the changes and the modifications in addition to the columns?
Yeah, I just, the, the old one is there, and I've made things that are being eliminated. They have the strike-through, and then additions are in red, but we can do that if, I can give you like the old document compared to the new, instead of them having.
The old one's posted in the Board Office Library.
Oh, okay.
Well, I want to make a motion that we table this so that we can have more in-depth discussion related to the salary structure and a comparative analysis, so we can dig in a little deep to see exactly what the changes are.
I second.
Just mean, a motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Lane.
All right.
Thank you.
We're ready for the consent.
We're ready for the consent agenda. I have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item J.
J?
They like.
Okay.
Dump.
Anything else? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item J.
So moved. Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Okay. Want to take it now?
That's fine. That's up to you. You'd like to do item J?
Like to do item J?
Madam Chair, I'd like to likewise table that for our discussion on the budget to Madam Chair, I'd like to likewise table that for our discussion on budget to go along with the action we will take on the new salary schedule.
Table until we have the budget reviewed?
Correct, which has to be very soon.
Okay.
Just a reminder, board, that we can't move forward with any hiring if you table. Just a reminder.
Right, I understand that, madam. So that's my motion.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Those opposing?
Aye.
I didn't hear any. I can't, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing?
Aye.
Motion?
Did you hear all that, Ms. Westphal? Do a roll call.
Do a roll call, please.
Carol Brown?
Yes.
Maxine Drew?
Epstein.
Annie Humphries?
No.
Brenda Jones?
No.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Yes.
Valdivia Nguyen?
Yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Yes.
So what do you have?
Can I clarify for myself on this? This means that all these people in the personnel report?
We've had that.
We cannot hire them because we voted to table them.
No, I was asking for the vote, what was the outcome?
It carries.
Motion carried. Okay, that's what, motion carried, so ordered. Okay.
Paying my bills.
Paying my bills.
I move we pay our bills.
I second it.
Motion been made in second to pay the bills. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 7:00 to discuss results of a formal investigation by Integrity Consultant Solution pursuant to a non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return it, how many minutes?
How many, 20 minutes?
At 7:20, with no action to follow.
We're going to move board to the conference room.
I haven't had a motion, have I? I need a motion.
I move we recess to executive session.
Motion been made. Thank you. We'll be back in the superintendent's boardroom about 7:00. So it can start. I entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second to come back into regular session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 7:25 for how many minutes? Five minutes to discuss an employee appeal pursuant to a non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return at 7:30 with action to follow. Going to get a motion?
So moved.
Motion been made, who's second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. I'll take a motion to come back into regular session.
I move.
So moved.
Motion been made in second to come back into regular session. Dr. Lane?
Board, we ask that you approve the hearing officer's report and recommendations on the employee termination.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the termination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Next, I need, I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 7:35 to discuss matters which will be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return to regular session at...
When?
10, 20 minutes. Five till seven. I mean, eight. I was wishing, five to eight. With action to follow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. I'll take a motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Oh, wait, Susan's not here. Susan's here now. A motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second to come back in regular session. Thank you. I'll take a motion to hire Julie Ford as the interim superintendent of schools and approve the contract effective July 1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. I take a motion here to hire Dr. Charles Foss as superintendent of school and approve the contract.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Discussion.
So call for discussion.
I would like to thank everyone who came out last week to give their feedback on the selection of the superintendent. We looked at the forms. We've all received many communications from people in the community, and I would like to say that my vote will reflect that I looked at the qualifications of both candidates, which were very good, very young, good young men with a good reputation. And I will just stop there and say you'll know what my vote is. Thank you.
I think we, as a district, have always, we talk about grow your own. I approve, I believe in that, and I think that's what we should be doing. So all those in favor, if there's no other discussion?
Roll call, though.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Aye. Motion carried, so ordered.
She asked for the contract.
No, no, it's all ready.
Yeah, that was part of the, part of the motion, the contract. You have anything else?
You might want to review your, your meeting timeline at the request of having a special budget meeting. You'll want to set that date, because it's urgent matter to move forward with your budget and then come back to your HR report.
I would like for us to have a discussion on setting the board, the budget meeting for next week.
Have a date?
Correct.
She just said next week.
I'm sorry, I'm bringing up my calendar. For, Susan, would you clarify which days the office is open due to the holiday?
What class?
Just on the 4th. I want to make a motion that we meet on July 3 at 5:00 PM.
You will be out of town.
I'll be out of the country.
So therefore, I recommend that we do it the following week.
I think we need to have it sooner than later.
Yeah.
That the majority of us will be here for us to make a solid decision, so that we don't push it back any further.
Is it this Friday? Is that a motion?
Oh.
Okay. Is it this Friday?
Okay.
Jamie? Dr. Mathers is not available on Friday, and she'd be key to this discussion.
Okay. Is, Dr. Mathers, is the, is the 3rd good for you?
Um, yes, we can make the 3rd.
Okay. Good.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second to have a special budget meeting July the, the 3rd at 5:00. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I won't be here.
Stand.
I'm out the country, honey. Motion passed. Anything else?
No, ma'am.[1785.82]